Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, ruler of all things and all men and women, you have set all things to move in harmony. You desire that men dwell in unity and love. Cause people everywhere to respect law and justice. Where people are unjust, inhumane, and cruel, send correction. Where they are at war, send peace. Give to those whom you have placed in the seats of honor and power the blessing of sound judgment, the skill of making wise decisions, the patience to act in due time, and the tact for being mutually helpful. May wisdom and knowledge be the stability of our time and our deepest trust be in you, the Lord of nations and the King of kings. Amen.
Amen.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we want to welcome each of you that are in attendance this evening and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. I would ask for those that are in attendance, if you would, please let's make sure that our phones are on silence so we would not disrupt the meeting this evening. For this is the people's meeting and again, we welcome you here. Also this evening, I would like to recognize all of you are special guests, you're citizens of this county, but we do have one young lady that is here with us, Ms. Trinity. Will you stand up in the back? Ms. Trinity is doing some her school studies on county government and she's here this evening to observe this Board of Commissioners and she's also been in contact with county manager and some of our staff. So we welcome you here this evening and we appreciate your interest. And after the meeting, any questions that you may have for this board, we are willing to answer them. So welcome to you and your mother. Glad to have you. All right, Commissioners, you have there before you your agendas. Are there any items that you desire to add or pull from tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Commissioners, we have no one signed up, but as we always do, we want to give anyone that may have failed to sign up the opportunity. Is anyone in attendance that wants to speak on any items that may be on the agenda?
No, not on the agenda, but I did sign.
Okay, but we'll do that later on in the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, here no one that wants to speak on agenda topics, we will move to the next item, which will be the consent agenda. You have there on the consent agenda, the minutes of February 21st, also for the regular session and the reconvene session. You have the tax releases and refunds. You have a health budget amendment for the WIC funding. You have there the military service person of the quarter resolution and the reentry proclamation. Are there any items you desire to pull?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. Under departmental matters this evening, we have planning a subdivision for approval, Plantation Harbor Phase 3A. Mr. Don Bumgager, welcome, sir.
Sure. The subdivision that's being considered tonight is called Plantation Harbor Phase 3A and the planning board did meet on this project back on February 24th and recommended approval. The property itself is owned by Kevin Mulelno and the surveying was done by Robert, I'm sorry, Kevin Mulelno, not Mulelno, Mulelno. The surveying was done by Robert Davis. The property is in township number five off of Annabella Drive, which is in the Plantation Harbor subdivision. There's a total of 19 lots that are proposed along the existing roads within the Annabellum Drive and it encompasses approximately 14.81 acres of property. The lots are going to be served by the county water system and a private wastewater treatment system that is operated by the Plantation Harbor Property Owners Association. In order for this subdivision to move forward and be recorded, a motion would be needed to approve the subdivision from the board.
All right, we have a motion. All right, let me entertain a second if I could. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second discussion. Commissioner Smith?
My interest is knowing about the road. Is this going to be a state-approved road leading to this property?
This is not a state-approved road. It is a private road. When the original development was put in, the developer did not want to dedicate the road to the state. He was willing to build it to state standards, but he did not dedicate the road to the state for acceptance into the state system. So these roads are private roads and it's up to the property owners within the homeowners association to maintain them and keep them up.
They are built to state standards.
Yes, the developer was willing to build them to state standards, just not willing to dedicate them to the state. He put up a private gate at the entrance to the development initially. Later, went through the process of leaving the gate open all the time and at this time, as far as I'm aware, the gate is still open for anyone to enter. At one time, some of these lots are being developed was part of a golf course area. The golf course has since closed and the property is sold and some of the properties now are being divided up to be sold and the balance of the golf course area is being turned into an equestrian facility along with walking trails and they're planning on allowing folks to have horses out there and have some barns so that the animals can be located out there at all times.
That being the case, I have one other issue. If we are going to accept this, I would like for us to, I don't know the word that I want to use. I don't want to say mandate, but I believe that the people, the property owners, people who are going to purchase this property, need to be aware of the kind of road that they are living on. We need to have something to indicate, some way of letting folk indicate that these are not state roads so that they know their responsibilities.
Actually, on the subdivision plat, it states that the roads are private roads. Now, whether that's how that gets conveyed to somebody, you know, it should be, but we'll just ask that the developer be sure that people know when they are purchasing lots in there, whose responsibility it is to maintain the roads.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Don, is there any process, I see where Commissioner Smith's going with that. Is there any process to add anything on the deed when the deeds are transferred, when someone buys it, that you have a note of a private road in that deed or area? I don't know that.
Don, don't we still require a street disclosure statement in this situation?
We do have a provision in our ordinance. It's meant really to apply to semi-improved roadways. It was never designed to apply to the private roads like within Fairfield Harbor or this type of development here. I think that, you know, what we could do, we could certainly ask that they follow that provision since there isn't any other provision out there and try to get it recorded with the deed just so that people going in would know about it and anybody in the future would hopefully have an opportunity to see it on the deed or it be picked up. What we have seen sometimes there, and this is no reflection upon attorneys, but what we've seen is somehow it gets, it doesn't get picked up when the properties are conveyed and sometimes the people do end up showing up, you know, at our office trying to find out what the status of the road is. So, but we could require, we could ask that he do that and if the, you know, once it's recorded, hopefully attorneys would pick it up to be sure that it travels along with that deed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Don, I believe you and I attended a meeting a couple of years ago where the real estate people were going to have another sheet where it would be recognized the people would have to sign when they buy it.
But I don't know if they ever did.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure if they did either, but I know we did discuss it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, since he's in my district, I'm going to look into it more often. I'm going to write down and look at it myself and see what's going on.
All right.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is any further discussion? All right, here no further discussion on the motion. Motion is to approve the subdivision. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. Thank you, Don.
Yes, sir. We will have a conversation with the developer about that disclosure statement to be attached to the deed.
Appreciate it. All right, next Commissioners, we have item four, which will be appointments. You have there before you the pending, current, and upcoming appointments. You see on the pending there, you have three. Do you have any nominations for any of those pending? All right, here none. We will move to current. You have the Fire Tax Commissioner for Township Seven.
You'll meet him.
Yes.
And speaking with Vice Chairman Booker today, he would request the board to table this for one more meeting so he can have further conversation with the fire department on this appointment.
Okay. Here no objection from the Commissioners. We will table. And then you see the upcoming terms expiring for April and May of 2022. There are a number of those that please keep them in mind. All right, anything else under appointments this evening? All right, here none. Next will be the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have one item for the board's consideration this evening and it involves an initial offer on county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The property is located at 1106 Broad Street here in New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight dash oh one two dash A is an apple dash three two five. This is property that is owned jointly with the city of New Bern. The city has given their blessing to the initial offer and so now we're taking a crack at it. The bid amount is $5,400. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $4,626.2 and the tax value of the property is $10,800. As with similar transactions, if the board approves it this evening, the city clerk will actually publish it for upset bids and then it'll be back before this board when the bidding process is concluded for final approval. I do recommend that the board consider giving approval to this tonight.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? That is to adopt the resolution, transaction, and advertisement for upset bids. Here no discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Appreciate it. Next item is the petition of citizens for general topics and this evening we do have two individuals who desire to speak before the board. We would ask that those individuals that would speak, if you would, as you come forward, to please give us your name, your address. And we do have a time clock here of three minutes and we would ask if you could keep your comments within those three minutes. We would appreciate it. All right, the first citizen desiring to speak before the board this evening is Mr. Calvin Williams. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name's Calvin Williams. I live at 1010 Heinz Drive. I have an issue with some stuff that's been going on on Asbury Road, on the Riggs Road. Seems the planning board got involved over a simple deed transfer June of last year and for some reason it's been held up and some reason the planning board has not contacted anybody, the landowners, or any reason why this was going on. Now I'm going to join this with another piece of property on 2365 Temple's Point Road. The planning board can't get involved down there because they said the zoning is not there. There's people down there that has destroyed, using a commercial use on a 13-foot right-of-way, destroying property, have destroyed agriculture ditch. The planning board has repeatedly said there's no zoning down there. They can't do anything. The Health Department will not do anything with French drains draining into an agriculture ditch, draining stormwater onto another piece of people's property that they put in. And it's my, I guess the family wants to know, why is the planning board involved in Asbury in a simple deed transfer? No money's exchanged hands. The man's deeding the property to his son. It was deeded, split four or five years ago and there was none of this done. The planning board did not get involved in that. But Jack Temple fought this, these people down there until he died last year. I got involved four years ago trying to help Jack fix the road. I have been drugged through every court, federal court. I've been called at the Harlow Community Center. These people informed the Harlow community that I was a gang member and that I was a drug dealer and Jack Temple was a drug dealer. I can't really get into too much of that because we have a court date coming up. But my problem is I want to understand why. Maybe I'm missing something. I'll come to planning board and maybe somebody could reach out to the Riggs family and let them know the reason why he's been waiting. The man's trying to move back from Kenton to Craven County on property that has been in his family for 80 years and the planning board can't do anything. Now Temple's Point, the Health Department, it says, looked me right in the face and said that they don't mess with these people. The planning board has told me they don't mess with these people. They have built, when they started that business, it was a bed and breakfast. No more than six people on their property any given time. It's in the permits, in the permit office. They slipped in a wedding venue that on any given weekend there's 150, 200 cars a weekend plus railways buses coming down a 13-foot easement. Jack tried to fix the road to the original 30-foot and every time we've got hauled into court, they just poured 17 yards of concrete in an agriculture drainage ditch. Nobody will touch these people.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you all and I'm sorry. I just.
Appreciate you coming before the Commissioners this evening. Next citizen desiring to speak is Mr. Edwin Vargas.
Let me give you a copy of this. I hate.
If you will, if you will, give it to our clerk over there and she can distribute it to each Commissioner afterwards.
I'll give you a copy.
I can make copies.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you. I'll make sure they all get it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. If you will, again, if you will, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Edwin Vargas. I live at 119 Random Wood Lane in New Bern, North Carolina. I come before the board this evening because I went ahead and looked at the budget ordinance for 2021 and 2022. And me dealings with the city on their budgets over the last several years, I do comparisons because part of my job when I was working for the federal government, I did a lot of finance work. And really jumps out at me, of course, is two areas and the two biggest areas are the Health Department, Mental Health and Social Services, and Craven County Schools. Now, what I would like to see, and hold on a second. Since 2018 to now 2022, Craven County Schools have been budgeted, in between those years, those five years, to the realm of about $1.6 million more in those five years, which is about $333,000. Now, a lot of these schools are aging and I don't know what can be done on the budget scrub when the budget is done every budget year, but our schools are important. And I even reached out on my own because my children are attending those schools and as far as keeping teachers within the school system. Now, I worked with Dr. Miller and I came up with my own solution 101, which I gave to the clerk, to keep teachers in schools and the relationship between the principal and the teachers. If the principal's not micromanaging the teacher, the teacher's going to stay. And in my eyes, teachers are important for education here in Craven County. I don't want to see them leave, but if Dr. Miller comes before the board requesting money, I would hope that the board entertains any request she has because these schools in Craven County, a lot of them need a facelift inside, painting, cleaning. And also, I'm really pleased with the state now in their budget process of giving these schools more money for custodial and food preparation people. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right. Commissioners, I ask all the citizens desiring to speak before the board this evening. Next item would be County Manager's Report. Mr. Jack White. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, always a pleasure. I'm so excited that we have a young person here tonight, interested in county government. I talked to Trinity and her mom. It just, I'm happy they're here. It's good to see that. I have just a couple quick updates for the board. Many of you, if you've driven Highway 70 over the last couple of days, you see there's been some litter pickup. I think as the chairman noted maybe a couple of meetings ago, the Kerswama landfill, which three county partnership did fund, two litter pickups in this fiscal year between now and June 30th. They are hitting Highway 71st and be going to some of the other major corridors and hopefully knocking that out in a couple more weeks. So I saw them, they were working really hard on between James City and Riverdale this afternoon. Also pleased to tell you, our roadside litter program, the board funded a couple of years ago, had gone a bit dormant lately due to some staffing issues, was backing up and running last week. They focused areas of Western Craven will be moving around. Commissioners, if you have roads that need attention that you're aware of, if you would email those to Lauren and let her know and she'll make sure that the solid waste department gets those and gets them on the list. I do know they have some priorities right now because some of the roads are looking pretty bad out there. So that is using inmate labor with county staff out on the road. So lastly, Commissioners, I'd just remind you, the previous speaker gave me a good entree into budget process starts this week. Staff will begin putting those budgets together and working toward getting it to you in May. So if you need me, I'll be out of the office in and out, working with the budget team on getting that done. So feel free to use my cellphone or check in with the office, whatever you need. Mr. Chairman, with that said, I'll take any questions or comments the board may have at this time.
Commissioners, any comments for the County Manager? All right.
Thank you.
Here none. Thank you. All right, last item we have on the agenda for this evening is Commissioners' Report. And Commissioner Mark, we'll start with you.
Okay, I'm very happy to announce the Carolina East Hospital has been named 101 out of 6,090 hospitals, which is a pretty, pretty good thing. That's about one-sixth of the top hospitals. And again, I say if you ever have, think you're going to have a heart attack, the place to go is Carolina East. So in addition to that, as far as COVID, we have 13 COVID patients and out of the 13, 10 have had some form of vaccination, which is an improvement. We have two inpatients in ICU and both are in intubators. And that ends my report for tonight, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Mark. Commissioner McCabe?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a report today.
All right. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I'm not there, anticipating by telephone, but I'm representing the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission at the National Association of Defending Communities Conference. That's all I have.
All right, thank you for your service. Commissioner Lainer?
Sir, I have two things to bring up. One, most of us been here in this community for a long time. No Kevin Heinz. Kevin Heinz is an Air Force retiree, has been here as long as I have, and that's since 1985. Been heavily involved with the veterans groups and association, was heavily involved with flights for the World War. Two vets going back, heavily involved during Desert Storm and Desert Shield on getting our veterans home for Christmas along with General Bratton. And he's just done a lot of things with a Purple Heart. He's heavily involved with the Purple Heart as well as all the other organizations. Sunday, we had a awards presentation presented to him on his yard in Carolina Colors from the Veterans Council, the Order of the Purple Hearts, Sons of the American Revolution, VFW posts, American Legion posts, for his service and everything he's done for this county. Kevin has been put on hospice, in-home hospice, and is short. So I would like, if all right with this board, to have the staff, I'm getting paperwork drawn up and everything else, of all his dealings and what he's done for this county, his vets, and get a letter of appreciation or some type of letter from this board to present to him.
All right, do I have a motion?
To move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Jones? Yes, thank you. All right.
Sir, next. Last week, week before last, we had a meeting with the Airport Authority, DOT, our state representatives in regards to Williams Road, trying to get money to move Williams Road, as everybody knows, so we can extend that runway to bring in another airlines. We've given them all of the paperwork and the projects and everything that's needed for that road to start. The first thing that needs to be done is an environmental impact study and that's somewhere between 750 to a million dollars. DOD has come back and reached back to us. They would like to have a resolution of support from this board to move that road so they can go in and look at contingency funding that they may have going through this short session or the end of this session that they got going on right now. So I'd like to make a motion, this board goes along with it, that we give, because this is short fuse, we've got to get this to them as fast as possible because the letter was supposed to have been up there yesterday, or Friday, for the correction. So give the staff authority to draw up this resolution. I think Jack already has one that we've used before, similar, and authorize and the chairman to sign on behalf of this board in support so we can get that funding and start that environmental impact study.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second. That board is.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, further discussion, Commissioner Mark?
I just wanted to say it's very important to the county to have that airport and this is a must that we have this airways coming to us regularly.
All right, further discussion on the motion. Commissioner Smith?
Since I've been on the board, I thought that we had done studies and some work on a road concerning the airport. And didn't we have a church bought by the property of a church or something of that sort? Was that not Williams Road?
No.
That was in front of the airport.
It's in front of the airport.
Yes.
Airport road?
Yeah. As you, at the light, you make the left-hand turn, it's the church on the right. So I don't know what the name of that road is, but Williams Road's on the backside going to Pollocksville.
Okay. The road that comes off from 70 that goes into the airport, what is that road?
Yeah, that's what I can't.
It's airport road.
It's not Williams.
Airport Road. That's not Williams. Williams Road is the back side.
My food line, the food line shops at Williams Road kind of splits that and the old gas station there.
My next question, thank you. My next question is, is it not feasible to study an entire area or is it too costly so that we are not coming back? You know, we start, we are paying for a small area this year, another one next year, and so on. We know that that airport has limited space, and so if we are studying the surrounding areas, would that not be feasible? Is that not sensible?
This area is studying the whole complex of Williams Road.
Yes.
Of moving it, because Williams Road is the only place we have to go. There's nothing, there's no place else out there, because we own the property that we want to move Williams Road into, meaning the county owns it. So, and it's going to be the whole study of that, and it's going to be this study of lengthening the runway. It has to be, FAA has to have it all under one.
Okay, good.
Yes, ma'am, it's a good question.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, here are no other questions, and you heard the resolution, that is to support the Department of DOT, Department of Transportation, and the environmental impact study of Williams Road. All right, here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Anything else?
Chairman, thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, sir. I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
All right. The only thing I want to, just a few things in talking about, we've had a lot of fires here in Craven County in the last few days, and folks, you know, I've been to three today, and I've seen what our volunteer fire and rescue squads do. We all know how fortunate we are to have them in this county, and again, I reiterate, they're volunteers, individuals who were supposed to be at work today that fought woods fires all day long. We had a major one over off of River Road going, and Commissioner Mark and myself, we kind of share that little area there, kind of a boundary there. It came close to burning down several homes, and they were able to save those homes. Last night, I know they fought a woods fire a good portion of the night in the western end of the county, and then also late this evening. Only thing I'd just say with that is first, again, we're blessed to have these volunteers all across this county that are doing this and put their lives and risks for all of us. Also, though, I just want to encourage all of our citizens, we're experiencing a very dry time right now, and definitely we've got some rain on the forecast of this week. Hopefully, we will get a measurable amount of precipitation from that, but I do want to encourage each and every one to please, let's not burn during these times. Our firefighters are worn down, and one thing that we need to realize is that it wasn't just an isolated few departments. I mean, we had them coming from all across the county and over, and from Jones County also today to assist, and they've had a long day, also our forestry folks. So just to say again, thank you for what they do. All right, Commissioners, anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll one last time.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. We stand adjourned.